It is 5:30 PM and we are on the Thomas J. Smith Council of Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen Grokko.
Rinker.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Phillips.
Graham Murray.
Here.
McCambell.
Here. Okay. All matters listed under Item 1 consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have five resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving 28E agreement between the City of Burlington and City Township Ambulance Association, CTT, or I'm sorry, CTAA, for ambulance service proportions of Des Moines County, Iowa. The third is a resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for higher license for Robin Canova doing business as A to Z Taxi Cab LLC. The fourth is a resolution to establish a new fee and charge schedule at the Burlington Recplex. And the fifth is a resolution approving restrictive covenants for property located within the Parkview subdivision. We have a public hearing set for April 1st for consideration of plans and specs for the 2019 AD improvements. We have one appointment, Mayor Proton?
Yes, we have Jeff Burkhart being appointed to Civil Service Commission. And thank you for your service on that.
Right on. Anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? Anybody besides Marlon Key? Okay. What do you pull?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th Street, Burlington, Iowa, number four.
Okay. Anybody else? I see none. Can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all items listed under Item 1 consent agenda except for item number four.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Okay. Before we get to my, uh, my award, we're going to, I've got a city council member and we're a little short tonight. So we're gonna take care of business and get this done first. Which would be number... Which one?
Temporary construction easements, number two under resolutions.
Second.
Thank you, sir. Number two is a resolution approving the purchase of temporary construction easements for the 2019 Locust sewer separation. Mr. McGregor.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you both, Mr. Matt.
This resolution here will approve part of the 53 temporary construction easements and part of, with part of the Locust sewer separation construction project. Rather than process them in all at one shot, we would like to get them processed as they come in. These temporary construction easements are, associate with the alleyway work. We're gonna have to dig sewers that are, some, some of them are in 25 to 30 foot range. So we will need to, you know, store some dirt and/or access some of the properties to, to be able to accomplish this. And that's what these temporary construction easements are.
Thank you, sir. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? You good?
I would point out just, just a notation that you did have a council member who wanted to make sure that he is in a position to abstain. Is that correct? Rinker?
Yes.
He has a payment that is directed towards him on one of the properties, so.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and vote then, Kathleen.
Okay. Rinker?
Abstain.
Wilson?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Thank you, counselor. Okay. Number one is a hearing, consideration of a lease agreement with Amtrak for Burlington Depot.
Before you is a, is a resolution and then a lease agreement with Amtrak for the Burlington Depot. It's a facility that they currently use for, for quite some time. It's been a project that I've worked on ever since I've been here and my predecessor as well. Also worked on to try and get a lease with Amtrak for the space that they currently do use. And when I say "they," it's the customers that Amtrak has get on their train as a stop. They use the restroom facilities and we heat and cool the area. So we would like to try and get some sort of payment for the, the use of those facilities. And that amounts $1,200 a month for the beginning years upon signature of the lease by Amtrak. And then it will increase by 1% every year. This is a 20-year lease, a pretty long-term lease, which is, which is good to see since a duration like that. They have in the, in the contract terms, they do talk about putting up some signage i- inside of the depot to indicate some of their, their uses. I don't know that they will do that, but, you know, it is a Burlington Train Depot. So for them to put something up in there is, I think, acceptable. But other than that, it's, it's pretty cut and straightforward. There's a lot of language in there that protects them insurance-wise and whatnot, but I can answer any questions.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th. Are we gonna be buying tickets down here or will they be able to set up a agent down here in the future under this agreement without an increase in the fee?
They certainly could, but the likelihood of that occurring is pretty small. The, the most likely thing to see happen that they might do in the future would be to put in a ticketing per- kiosk type thing. They're get, they're eliminating agents throughout their system.
It's happening all over, technology, what do you do? Any other questions or concerns? I see none, counsel?
Good.
Have a motion to close?
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving a lease agreement with the National Railroad Passenger Corporation, Amtrak, for use of the Burlington Depot.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen, let's take it to vote.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. Number two is a statement for consideration of an application for a state revolving fund, SRF loan, for the combined sewer separation throughout the Locust Basin. Mr. McGregor.
So this is, it's really an environmental information document that I have to read through. And then questions based on the work that we're doing because of the funding source through the state revolving fund that, for the sewer project. So I will read through some of this. Is, was made available in the packet and there is also some copies over there. So the project is in the city of Burlington and it describes where we are located, describes the census, the, this amount of population we have. The collect, the current wastewater collection system, the existing Locust Basin collection system consists of 7,730 linear feet of combined gravity main, 6,648 linear feet of sanitary gravity main, 3626 linear feet of stormwater gravity main, 20 sanitary manholes, 37 combined manholes, 68 stormwater inlets. The existing sanitary sewer consists of eight inch, nine inch, 10 inch ventrified clay pipe, a forced main that runs along Main Street to the wastewater treatment plant located just east of the Locust Basin and Main Street. There are no lift stations within the Locust Basin collection system. The existing combined gravity main ranges from nine to 36 inches of ventrified clay pipe. All sanitary and combined manholes are comprised of brick material with inflow and infiltration issues. The purpose of this project is to make improvements in the wastewater treatment collection system to enhance the reliability, increase capacity, and replace obsolete system to safely and reliably operate the city of Burlington wastewater system for the next 20 years. The proposed improvements of this project include new sanitary sewer replacement along existing combined sewer alignment. Existing sanitary sewer forced main will be reused to replace, depending on the condition of the pipe. Existing combined sewer will be reused as storm sewer with improvements to the existing storm, or existing sewer, including pipe repair, intake replacement, manhole lining, to help the structural integrity of the existing structures. The receiving stream of the MASL, or the Masl, Angular South Locust Sewer Separation, the Locust Improvement Project is the Mississippi River. The Mississippi River has an A1 designation. I'm gonna skip a couple of things. The alternatives include combination of cured-in-place lining, replacement of existing, new installation, reuse, and separation were considered. The reason for the selection of proposed alternative, we received a no-action. Alternative is not viable due to the DNR administrative consent order to implement Burlington's long-term control plan to separate the sewers. The measures taken to assess impact coordination, we partnered with Southeast Regional Planning and there are several partners listed, as you can see in the document, from tribes to US departments and then state departments as well. The environmental impact, construction traffic patterns within the community may be disrupted above normal noise lover, normal noise levels in the vicinity of the construction. Equipment can be anticipated during construction and should be a temporary problem. Adverse environmental impacts on noise quality will be handled by limiting hours of contractor work time during the day. Other adverse environmental effects from construction activities will be minimized by proper construction practices, inspection, prompt cleanup, and other appropriate measures. Areas temporarily disturbed by construction will be restored. Solid waste resulting from the construction project will be regularly cleared away with substantial efforts made to minimize inconvenience to area residents. Care will be taken to remove dirt to avoid erosion and runoff. The proposed project will disturb soils over a greater area than one acre. Therefore, the applicant is required to obtain a NPDES permit for the stormwater discharge associated with the, the activities and abide by its terms. Therefore, no significant impact to surface water quality, fish, shellfish, wildlife, or their natural habitats is expected. Temporary air quality degradation may occur due to dust and fumes from construction equipment. The applicant shall take reasonable precautions to prevent the discharge of visible emissions of fugitive gas beyond the lot line and of the property during the proposed project. This project may require the disposal of sewage sludge. It is the responsibility of the applicant to ensure that the disposal of any sewage, sewage sludge complies with the applicable, applicable requirements found in 40 CFR Part 503 and 567 Administrative Code. Properties that contain regulated materials are located within or near the proposed project area. If construction activities find an unknown area of contamination, it is the responsibility of the applicant to follow the procedure of notification of hazardous conditions. Excavated soil that contains a hazardous substance mu- must be assessed and properly disposed of. And then follow, it goes into historical and archaeological. For this project, we all, we have a review by the State Historic Preservation Office and they also review for native tribes' interests. The summary of the reasons for concluding of no environmental impact, the, the project will not significantly affect the pattern and type of land use, industrial, commercial, agricultural, recreational, and residential, or growth of the distribution of population. Project will not conflict with local, regional, or state land use plans or policies. The project will not impact wetlands. The project will not affect threatened or endangered species or their habitats. If any state or federally listed threatens or endangered species or communities are found during the planning or construction phases, additional studies and/or mitigation may be required. The project will not displace population, alter the character of existing residential areas, or convert significant farmlands to non-agricultural purposes. The project will not affect the 100-year flood plain. The project will not affect on parklands, preserves, other public lands, or areas not recognize, or, or of recognized scenic or recreational value. No historic preservation, historic properties will be adversely affected by the proposed project. However, if the project activities uncover any items that may be archaeological, historical, or architectural interest, or if important new archaeological, historical, or archaeological data should be encountered in the project, in the project ape, APE, I don't know how, what that means, sorry. The applicant should make reasonable efforts to avoid further impacts to the property until an assessment can be made by an individual meeting the Secretary of Interior's professional qualification standards. The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient air quality provided the applicant, the applicant takes reasonable precautions to prevent the discharge of, of visible emissions of fugitive dust beyond the lot line during the proposed project. The project will not have a significant adverse effect upon local ambient noise levels, surface water quality, groundwater quality, or quantity or water supply. No significant impact to surface water quality, shellfish, fish, wildlife, or their natural habitats is expected to provide that the, that an NPDES permit be obtained and the terms of it are which are abided. And so, this will be signed by you and then submitted back to the state. That is the end of that. I surmised as much as I could.
Really? I thought you read the whole thing.
I know.
Could you repeat it, Nick?
You missed a part?
Yes, I did.
I can answer any questions if there are.
Let's see if there are any. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
I have none. I'm just laughing about how they could guarantee the air quality, but.
The applicant is, is us. So what that means is we have to make sure that the contractor that we award bid to follows by these same stipulations.
Okay. Good answer, I like that.
Well, all right then. I got a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
Rinker?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Where's the statement? Okay. Before we go any further, I want to go ahead and get this one squared away and then we'll, we'll wrap this meeting up. But I do have an award tonight that I want to address. The award that I'm giving out tonight goes to a good friend of mine. And just to make a long story short, um, one time I was dropping this friend off from school and there was a cat on his porch. And he said to me, he says, he says, Buddy, why don't you go pet this cat? And I said, Buddy, I'm not gonna pet this cat because if I pet the cat once, the cat's gonna think we got a relationship, you know what I'm saying? And I'm just not ready to make that commitment. Well, anyways, Buddy was like this cat to me. I didn't want to get too close to him because I didn't want to make a commitment because I love hard. But Buddy got close to me and now we're super buddies. And I get to pick him up from school once in a while and he comes to my house and hangs out. We go to church, to the same church together. And the reason why I'm doing such a good job at being mayor, nobody say anything, is because of the support that I got from Buddy. So tonight, you thought you were coming down here for me, it was a trick. You're down here for you. So...
General.
Thank you, counselor. Being known on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your support, thoughtfulness, and friendship has encouraged me as mayor over the years. You are an inspiration to me and all the citizens in this great city. People like you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On March 18th, 2019, this mayor's award is presented to Nick Hopkins. Buddy, come on down. Also, his, what's your, what's your MBA 2000, what's your MBA name?
Alfredo Twizzlers.
I love it. All right.
Can you get a picture with me and Buddy?
I'm trying to get the Burlington thing behind you, one more. Is that your best smile?
Yeah.
Give her your best, Buddy. You get it? Okay. Buddy, let me give you a bracelet. All righty then. And Buddy, this is for you. And this is what happens after we do this, are you getting another one? Look one more time.
I am, because I didn't get the Twizzlers in last time.
Yeah, hold the Twizzlers.
All right, that one rocks, that was a good one.
All right, get one for Leila, even though that's not really her name. All right, Buddy, this is what happens now.
What's gonna happen?
I usually say, would you have a word? And then this is where you may go, right over here so the camera can see you and then talk to the microphone and have a word.
Okay. Well, I'm very happy I got this award. I usually don't really get many awards, especially from this guy. And I'm actually very thankful. I also thank my mom. She is the only reason why I'm alive and you're very happy of that. And I thank you, I thank you all, I thank you guys, and...
What do I wish to your mom?
Thank you for making Buddy.
Go give her a hug, Buddy. Buddy, thank you for being a mayor. I am a great citizen, you got to be a buddy, you got to be a good buddy. You look great, Buddy, thanks for coming down. All right. Now that the whole city of Burlington knows that I couldn't be a good mayor without your help.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You guys could leave now if you want to, you don't have to stick around for this stuff. Thanks for coming down, Buddy. Okay. Where are we at?
Right here.
Okay, number three, this is consideration of a sewer revenue loan agreement and the principal amount not to exceed $6,500,000.
Second.
So this is a refinancing two existing sewer, sewer SRF loans? Or no, just sewer revenue loans? Total amount on the loans is 5.8 million, just in that neighborhood. It shows 6.5 million because you're also releasing two, what is it? What do you call it, Stephanie?
Sewer reserve.
Reserve fund, so it's cash that we have within in-house and it just gets reserved back, or released so it can go back into the sewer fund instead of being listed out in a separate account. The main reason for doing this refinancing of the bond schedule is to, is for bond savings. And is that in the two, 200, estimated in about 270,000, 280,000?
286,000.
Wow, even better. The repayment schedule on the bonds, is it the same as what the existing ones are?
Yep, the repayment schedule will be the same. Basically, the fees will be lower because instead of having two bonds with two fees, you'll have one bond then. The interest rate, they're, they're projecting it to when it sells, it'll be about three and a quarter. One of the bonds that we're refunding right now has 5.4 to 6% interest. And then the other bond that we're refunding has an interest rate between 2.5 and 4.2. So that's where the savings is coming in on the interest payments, or the interest payments that we won't have to make in the future, so. Other than that, there's no change, we're not delaying any principal. It'll be paid off at the same time it was originally scheduled to be paid off.
All right.
So the resolution tonight essentially gives your authorization for us to proceed with that process? Refinancing would be, the bonds are, the next payments due June 1st. So we'd see the, those paid off June 1st and a new bond, bond arrangement entered into that day with first payment the following year on June 1st.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. We're saving money. Peanut butter?
It's good, nothing, I'm good.
Okay.
Have a motion to close?
Second. Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, counselor, we certainly appreciate you hanging on, I know you don't feel good.
Your Honor, I have a resolution expressing intent to enter into a sewer revenue refunding loan agreement.
Second. Kathleen, let's make a camp.
Rinker?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. We've got three resolutions here. Our first is a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 Aspen and Dill Reconstruction Project. Mr. McGregor.
Need a second?
Second.
This project will award bid for the Aspen and Dill Reconstruction, which is a full-depth concrete reconstruction with some storm sewer on an extension of Sequoia. The, the recommended award would go to Jones Contracting, $600,000, $62,000, $700... I botched that a long time ago.
It's all right, we get it.
$662,777, which is quite a bit underneath the engineer's estimate of $945,000. A lot of what that is attributed to is because of the DOT-funded work that we had with concrete and that's how we, we base our concrete pricing off of. And there's a lot more traffic control that was involved in that type of work. So I think we got a pretty good price and so the remaining funds from the, the GO money that we use, the bonded money that we use, will go to asphalt work that you'll see coming up in the next couple of months, so.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
Marlon Key, 1121 South 12th.
I asked your wife to try to contain you a little bit tonight.
She forgot the chain, sorry.
That, that request went unanswered, please continue, Marlon.
What was the initial, was 800 and some thousand?
945,000.
Okay, so we're saving roughly $175,000. Again, I brought up about extending Sequoia Street on, beyond Aspen. If we got the extra money, why don't we go ahead and do that while we can and get the sidewalk as far as we can? I would still, who do I have to talk to with the state to get that deal killed on Mason Road? So that we can use that money towards Sequoia.
We, that project can't be transferred from one to the other. We don't own the land where the extension is being, that you're suggesting is at. That's not a platted street. That may be something that happens in the future, but it's not set up to be able to occur now.
Well, you're extending Sequoia to A, or Aspen. You didn't own that land. It's all the same land, I mean.
Mr. McGregor.
So, so the rationale on, on not extending Sequoia Drive is we have other, we have other priorities to fix other current roads in town and that's what that money will be used for. We do not currently own the land where that section of Sequoia Drive is going. You'll actually see that easement or right-of-way purchase come through shortly. However, the reason for that extension is to, one, help supplement the phasing of construction. When we go in there and do full-depth reconstruction, we will leave people quite a distance away from access for their cars on the roadway and this at least alleviates that to a certain degree. Also gives emergency personnel a little bit of access to, to try and provide some level of service even during construction. And even after the project, it would, it's nice to have, that road probably should have been a cul-de-sac probably when it was developed, a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac of some sort. So that'll alleviate the concern there.
Okay. And it's good to know that we've taken those extra dollars to at least put back into roads, so we need to continue to do that. Any other questions or concerns from the audience? Counsel?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, Kathleen?
Rinker? Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. Number three is a resolution amending stormwater utility system fees effective July 1st, 2019 with annual adjustments through July 1st, 2023 pursuant to Chapter 100.7 of the Burlington City Code. James, you gonna?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
This would match, on a five-year basis, this would match the sewer revenues, fee adjustments that we did last fall on a five-year basis. We'd originally presented this last week with just a 3% annual that was budgeted for this upcoming year. This keeps it in line with what we're doing on the sewer side and matches what we need to have moving forward as we work with the DNR on how are we approaching the sewer separation, or, yeah, sewer separation work over the next few years.
Okay, we've already covered this, but if you have any questions on this one, anyone? Okay. Counsel?
Nope, good.
Okay. Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to Resolution Number Four. It's a resolution to establish a new fee and charge schedule at the Burlington Recplex. It's a resolution to establish a new fee and charge schedule at the Burlington Rec Place. A second?
Second.
And, uh, Marlon?
Well, okay. I thought you had something on here about swimming, too. As far as the rec place goes, uh, you're talking about raising it to two dollars and having a one-dollar ticket. Uh, my understanding is when I went to my grandson's soccer games, I was already paying two dollars. Who was getting the other dollar out of my fee?
Did you have, it was two dollars before?
Yeah.
It's not changing that part, this is, this is going back, a few years ago, we had, it was a two-dollar fee, and we had a, a dollar of that, you got a token. That was taken away a few years ago, this is somewhat doing a comparable thing now. Uh, you're gonna, when you're going in, you pay your two dollars, what, what are you gonna get then, Eric?
You'll get a dollar, you'll get a ticket that has a dollar for, uh, value at the concession or, uh, bedding cages, and then the other half of the ticket will be a coupon to a local business that sponsors the ticket.
So it's not an increase in your price structure, but it is going back to somewhat, somewhat of the token system that we had in place before.
You just go by what's in the paper. So, is there another resolution for the pools or something?
Uh, no, it's not on tonight. We, uh, we had a work session item last week, uh, discussing, uh, potential changing of hours for the sweet sw- free swims, and the number of free swims in a year. Um, that was asked to be moved, to be brought back at the subsequent work session, which will be next week.
Which we can't talk about then either.
Well, Darren, you can make your comments on that, uh, during the, at the end, yes.
Anybody else? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
Rinker?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, so can Mr. Rinker go to bed?
Uh...
I believe I said it right?
That is the end of action items, uh, if Matt leaves the meeting, you can still have your, uh, communications from the public, but it isn't of, an official meeting at that point, it's still, it's...
Jim, is there, is there anything else you need me for tonight?
There are no action votes on, so the count, the, the remaining counsel can, can, uh, listen to comments from the public. And I, I took up Matt that you were planning on just watching the, the video from home, the rest of it.
Yeah, I'll follow up the video from home. Okay, thanks guys, I'll be right back.
Appreciate it, Matt, thank you.
Alright, thank you councillor, lay down men, get better. Okay. So, that brings me to, help me, councillor, okay, we're good. So this brings me to the end of our meeting, um, this is where we enter, uh, entertain comments from the audience. Again, I'd just like to, uh, remind you guys, if they're not questions, we can't have a back and forth, they're just comments, so, um, but everybody is more than welcome to bring their comments at this time. Mr. Sloan?
Uh, O N T Sloan, sixteen twenty-one South Fourteenth Street, Burlington, Iowa. Um, I like Mr. McKee, uh, a little, got thrown off by the Hawkeye, cause they was, was putting yesterday's paper that we were supposed to be talking about the swim day, I mean, the swim days this year. And I have, my comment on that is this, I was here last time this came up, and I talked about my club, the gentleman's club of Burlington. And we've been having a swim day out there, our first swim day was August eighteenth, two thousand one. This year will mark eighteen years. We, last year was seventeen years we've been out there having a swim day. And we've had agreements with the Parks Department and then for, for fees and our, what we pay. They've been very cooperative with us, because there is a, directly across from the concession stand outside the fence, there's a little shelter area there, it's not enclosed. And we, we go out there, we bring our big grill out there, and we, we grill hot dogs, we have chips, cookies, and punch for everybody that's there.
It's a good time.
Even the, uh, people that work there come over and have hot dogs. And we don't take any money away from the concession stand that the ci- the city has there, cause a lot of kids, they get hot dogs, and they're eating stuff inside all the time, too. But this, uh, what it says in the Hawkeye is that we're going to talk about cutting the hours from, down from noon to six, from, to twelve-thirty to four-thirty. And it also talks about the number of free days. We only have one day out there, and like I said, we've been having our one day out there for seventeen years, it's gonna be eighteen years this year, hopefully, things will work out. But, uh, you know, a few years back, uh, North Hill Neighborhood Association, they got some money from one of the businesses, I think it was Case, uh, Case, well, it's, it's, uh, called something else now, it's not just Case, but... And they, uh, got, they've had, uh, uh, free, uh, lessons out there, and they had like six swim days out there free, and so on and so forth. And now, if we're talking about cutting it down, the four, that's gonna limit the kids. And I just wanna say, myself and our club members, like I said, we've been doing this for seventeen years to help the kids. We think that that park out there, plus that swimming pool, is an asset to this community. You know, like I said, we stuck with the city when they were, that, the pump, you was having trouble, the pump was bad, the floor was real bad, and you took your, took money and went out to Mr. Wineguard's facility and put a lot of money out there and let that place kinda go down. You got out of Wineguard's facility, went west Burlington, I'm talking about the water park, if you're confused, mayor.
Yeah, I don't remember giving them money.
Uh, back in two thousand eight-ish, or whenever the, they built their pool out there, that was designed, uh, to be something that the city was very heavily invested in. We, we were still invested in that, we make a portion of the debt repayments on it, but...
I thought he meant recently.
No, no, I'm talking about, we, I said back then, when you got involved in that, we stayed with you, the city. When West Burlington re- rebuilt and, and mo- remodernized their swimming pool out there, we st- we, we stayed with the Burlington City, the city of Burlington's, and Dankworth Pool, and had our swim days out there for the kids. And we're just, you know, so we stayed here, we think it's a great asset, that park, that pool is a great asset, and you finally, you know, we just wanna keep it going, but we just don't understand what this says, like, so I'm reading, I'm gonna read from the Hawkeye. And maybe all, maybe the s- the council members might have had some conversation about this, too, I don't know, maybe I'll have it at your next work session. But to, you know, it says, according to the memo written by the, the Milton Parks Director, Eric Trisland, Tisland, Tyzland, I guess. The cost of providing the free swim days is not covered by the fee charged to the sponsors for them. Tyzland also said, increase in incidents and, and incidence of, uh, rescuers and first fi- and fistfights make the free swim days more difficult than other days with the pool. Now, we've been out there seventeen years, and we've only had two incidents out there. The first one we had was a elderly Caucasian lady, homeless, we think, that was rummaging through the ladies', uh, locker, change lockers. Police came out and got rid of her. We had ours one day, we had another incident where there was a couple of boys that were wanting to do a little duking out, outside the pool. We went out there and stopped that, the, the police came, and it wasn't no big deal. So we haven't been having any problems with ours one days, because we go around, I'm, like, I'm the secretary of the club, and I go around and some of the guys and snap pictures, just for history purposes, the kids out there having fun. So we're in and out of that pool, walking around, we're not just sitting outside, eating the hot dogs and so on and so forth, and cooking for the kids, we're in there. But, and then also, when we first started having it back in two thousand one, and the years, early years after that, we were, since it was such a big thing, and there were so many of us people of color out there, we used to get two or three sweeps by the Burlington Police Officers. Would come by, see what was going on, drive through, sometimes they would sit there for five, ten minutes, so we didn't have no problems. So I, I'm disagree, you know, I don't like that where that talks about that, that there's a lot of problems out there, cause we've been out there for seventeen years, and we haven't had any, other than the two that I mentioned. And I just don't, uh, you know, that's, like, we keep, I keep saying, that is a great asset to this city. You got, you got, you have, I think, right now, you have seven free swim days, you up the price, you know, a few years back to, was it three hundred and some dollars for a free swim day? Or is it six hundred?
Six hundred, it, I think you were five hundred for, with a cap of the number of people that was in it be- before that?
Well, way back when we first started, it was a, it was a little, a lot less than that. But anyway, so if it's a money thing, I, I, you know, we're paying them, the, us and the South Hill Neighborhood Community's paying money. And I think there's enough money there to support that pool and the people that work there, and still make money off the concession stands. So I just hope that you, and the counsel at their next work session will take my comments and our club's comments in consideration of this, and hopefully, well, you will not change the hours or the days of free swim. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think that, uh, staff had had, the, the issues have been since, not, not from your group so much, as it has been the change from the one to the seven swim days, just of the sheer magnitude. And I, and I, even looking at your numbers, they didn't delineate between your group and the others with the presentation and, and in a memo from Eric, but, uh, like this last year, I think that the peak number was nine hundred some kids on a given day. Yours is more like three to four hundred, it's, it's a, it creates a different dynamic, and I think that's been more the, the concern is just how, the sheer nu- number, and, and that's where the, the sheer number has led to more of the, the issues. That your group is a little bit smaller, and that, that's not where they've seen the issues. Um, and I don't think they've had the, the, the number of saves that they've had to do, um, with your group as just the, the other one, the other one, and so... It's just a different dynamic with the number of, I think, the sheer number of kids there, and the hours may have been an issue prior. I mean, I mean, the length, I don't know if it was or not, but given that it's seven times a year, it plays out differently than when it's one time a year. And they've seen with the, with the level of unsuperv- unsupervised kids with the others, that they see more problems the longer it goes on. And I don't think that necessarily relates to your group. Uh, because I don't think that it's, it's a di- it is a different dynamic between your group and the, and the, the South Hill Neighborhood Association, just the way that it plays out.
Well, I, the president of the South Hill Neighborhood Association is, he's a member of my, of the club, and in fact, he's one of our founding members that came in from Toledo, Ohio, when Champion made the big move. I'm talking about Vince Copeland. And, and we like Vince, he's great, but, uh, maybe if they're having, if the dynamic is the numbers when they're having their parties, maybe you could talk to them and, and also get some more people out there. If, if they're paying five, six hundred dollars, maybe if they're having that many kids, their price might even go up to cover the staff.
We, we, we increase our staffing, but it's, it's a, I think that you've had, what was the, you had how many saves in one day?
Uh, I'd have to check with Brad, it was two or three, that we...
Two or three, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just a different, different level, and it creates a little bit more stress, and just the sheer number during the course of the year, it, that plays out differently than it, when you have that many as opposed to a, a couple. And again, this has been a discussion item, this is a recommendation from staff, and the counsel will talk about it again next week, and part of the reason the, the counsel put it off was to make sure that there was time for this kind of a conversation to occur.
And Owen, it's my understanding that some of the committee members met again with Eric, and they are coming up with a agreement that's gonna work for everybody. Some volunteers have stepped up to the plate, and I, I think, um, you can sleep better tonight and not have heartburn about this issue, cause I think it's gonna work itself out, and I think it's gonna be okay.
Well, uh, who was, what was the committee that came up with the...
I've just met with a couple of staff, or members of the South Hill Neighborhood, just to discuss their views, uh, Brad wasn't available, so we're gonna try and meet again this week.
Eric, Carol, Bartles.
Talk about what the two, uh, two recommendations in the resolution were, and kinda where we go from here.
Well, I'm asleep good anyway, but I'm just gonna be down when you, the seat, when it just comes up to talk about it again.
Yeah, it'll be on next week's work session, I assume, unless you have something that delays it to the fol- to the following work session, but...
But if it's not, it'll be in the paper from the agenda for what's...
Well, hopefully, you know, I thought it was in the paper, too, today, but evidently Hawkeye didn't get the word.
Yeah, I didn't see that. Anyone else? Midwest Magic? Midwest Magic?
We from the Mad at Team Dice. We wanna tell you danger for having this tonight.
Thanks for coming down.
And we have a card for you, Dice, for having this tonight. We, we got a trophy deal, and we don't win it on Sunday again.
Oh, that's nice.
Then this table bell rocks out, it'll, it'll come a red, red, mad, that.
Hold that up a little bit, Coakley.
It'll come a red, red, mad, that. Cause they don't go for six in the row, Dice.
Six in a row, no way.
We do have tickets down at Hoop Year's High V, and we wanna fill a gym up this year.
I talked to, uh...
I can't see your face, there's too much trophy there.
I talked to past chief, uh, police, uh, uh, viewers, and, uh, he's, he's supposed to be in town for this...
That's good, cause I hope he gets a play on our team. You boys are in trouble.
So what ti- what time does this?
Four o'clock. Four o'clock, Sunday afternoon.
And what's the theme? What's the theme?
Meet tonight.
Revenge.
Yeah, we're, uh, this year, we're having a bash at the beach theme.
Oh, fine.
So, this is the, the sixth year we've done this now, and it's kinda funny, that's how...
Can we come to the microphone, so the people can hear?
Yeah, this is the sixth year we've done this now, and I believe it was the second year that, uh, Mayor Shane McCambell kinda got involved with this and tried to help us promote it. It was the third year that Shane actually convinced me into bringing six hundred pounds of confetti to, uh, Burlington High School Gymnasium, which temporarily got the Midwest Magic banned from the facility. While, uh, they cleaned it up, so...
No work, we can't use confetti anymore.
And I, I even, I even had Shane on videotape saying the city would set aside specific funding to get that cleaned up if I did that. Still haven't seen that money.
That was my twin brother Craig, so...
No, it's, it's been a, a great event, the police have been wonderful to help, you know, keep it going, and the city's support for it, it's, it's one day a year to forget about all the things that we don't like, and, you know, cherish and embrace the things we, we enjoy, so... It's gonna be a bash at the beach. We made, uh, short work of, uh, Fire Marshal Crook's team down at, uh, the Gus Macca, and also Shane's team down there as well, so...
We're not here to talk about that right now, Frige, let's, let's focus.
We've been practicing, no.
Focus on what's important. You know what, did I ask you to come down?
Yeah, I, I take that back, but listen.
This is a, this is a phenomenal event, and this is the si- this is the sixth year?
Sixth year.
This is a, it's a phenomenal event for the city of Burlington, um, the crowd just keeps be- getting bigger every year. I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing, uh, what's gonna go down. I just wanna let you know, though, we're on TV, the police have been talking smack, and they said that they're gonna put a whooping on you guys, like, this is business.
Yeah, they keep saying that every time, and they're like, you'll lose, you'll get the last laugh there, you idiot.
Can I, can you get one picture with me, real quick, just with the, with the boys and the, I just gotta get one of these.
There you go.
After we walked off, I'm like, oh, gee.
He took, he still got a picture of you right there, too.
Do you? Yes.
One, two. Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, I like that one.
And, and plus the donation, and then we'll be...
Our donation's coming.
Awesome, awesome.
Am I allowed to be here? I live in West Burlington.
Yes, you're allowed to be here.
You're out of order.
Since you're traveling with the team.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for coming down, we're pleased, yeah. And thanks for the car, gents, we'll make sure we hang this up, and the chambers. Any other comments from the audience, yes, sir?
Marlon Key, eleven twenty-one South Twelve Street, to go along with the notice was saying, about to swim out there, they're talking about rescues, something I haven't heard brought up, and maybe somebody can talk about it, is, uh, swim lessons. Maybe some free swim lessons for those rescues you're having, you know, kids don't learn to swim by themselves, so...
I'm glad you brought that up, they are seeking funding for swim lessons.
Any other comments from the audience? I see none. Mr. Tisdale? Kathleen? Peanut butter?
I am speechless, just, uh, because... I am speechless. Just, uh, be careful if you have to travel south, I guess the river is coming up. John probably would know more about that.
James?
He's probably gonna show you a little bit of a map. Be happy you're not in, uh, eastern Nebraska right now with, speaking of flooding.
It's terrible.
I know, my mom and, my mom and sister went to a speech meet, uh, last week, and they had to stay in the town, cause that was when all the rain happened. It wasn't until the next day where they had all the issues. They, they luckily are okay. The town that they live in, you got a little bit of flooding issues, but not near as much as, uh, what happened to the, to the northwest and to the east of them. You know, the, that hydro dam, that was up by Spencer. That was quite the, uh, thing to watch at Knockford.
Spencer, Nebraska as opposed to Iowa?
Did I say Iowa?
No.
No.
You just said Spencer.
I guess I've been here so long, I just say Iowa now, don't I? Uh, so I put up a, when I printed it off, current National Weather Service forecast of the river level. I say current when I printed it off because they seem to change it about every hour and a half or two hours. Um, as you can see, we've hit our crest for the time being, and it should reside, it should recess a little bit. Uh, however, uh, the, next week, we should see the beginning of a new crest. Um, given the, the amount of snow melt that's occurred up in north central Iowa and sou- southern Minnesota and Wisconsin, I, I think that that number is probably a little higher than that. Uh, we have put up, uh, flood protection that will protect us to at least that. Uh, we have not crossed the railroad tracks on the north, uh, nor have we ringed around the, uh, the Hawkeye Hole, as I have now dubbed it. Uh, but we have the inserts in, and the water, uh, should just be coming up to touch some of it, uh, on the, on the south section. Uh, there's maybe a couple inches, and we are pumping, uh, out of the wet well, uh, that, that has seepage line and then rainwater that comes in. I think the pump's been riding, running at idle. Uh, we, we will need to probably put up PESCOs across the north side of, uh, the flood protection, um, if we go higher than not nineteen point five, but, um, as of it, as of right now, everything seems to be holding, so. Just wanted to give you an update of where we're at and kinda where we plan to go, but, um, I think that the forecasting that they had called for with, uh, flooding in April, maybe got advanced or accelerated a little bit because of the warmer-than-normal temperatures that we, that we've been seeing, not just here, but uh, north of us, so I don't, I don't know what we'll see, but, uh, we'll be prepared to try and do our best effort to, to protect, but anyway, I don't have anything else other than that.
Thank you, sir. James?
You know what, I don't have anything. Uh, I will be out of town the end of this week, ni- so Nick, are you going, gonna be out of town as well? So then you'll be coming up to the, it's, he'll be coming up to the same conference I met. So I guess Stephanie, you get to be in charge for the latter half of the week, if, but, uh, available by phone.
We're gonna get something done.
Available by phone or email if you need, need me during it. While I'm gone, thanks a lot.
You're welcome, James.
That's all.
Just wanna remind everybody, if you're getting a strong smell and a strong chlorine taste, the water's up, it's gonna be like that for a while, but once the water starts to drop down, they won't have to use as many chemicals to treat the water. Um, so, uh, just bear with us. Um, Joni Ernst will be coming, our, uh, Senator, will be coming on the twenty-third, uh, to the Capitol at one thirty for a town meeting. It's first town meeting that she's given in Burlington. She cares about us, so if you've got something that you want to, uh, uh, that you want your voice to be heard on, on an issue, uh, she's coming, um, in peace, uh, but she wants to hear from you. So that's at the Capitol at, uh, one thirty, that is the twenty-third, uh, uh, that's the Saturday.
At the Capitol?
At, at the Capitol Theater, that is correct. Um, a- again, for, for those that missed out, uh, Great River Christian, um, they, they won the, uh, Hustle, uh, Cup that we had a banquet the other night, and we gave away awards, and, uh, Jim, who his daughter plays for my team, uh, he won the worst, worst sportsmanship award. I don't know if anybody missed that from last week, but I just want that documented. He tackled his own daughter. It's shameful. Uh, we're, uh.
She deserved it. We won.
Shameful. Anyways, uh, we, uh, Burlington has, uh, is saying goodbye to, uh, Eddie Brewer. And, uh, I was, I was saddened to hear that, uh, that we lost, that we lost him. Um, if anybody, if you don't know him, he, he would be walking down the street, um, you could catch him anywhere, and, you know, she knows, she in the back. She's like, she already knew the deal, and he would just wave to anybody. Um, I, uh, I'm gonna miss, uh, seeing Eddie Brewer um, walking through the streets of Burlington, so, uh, um, those that know, uh, that remember him, um, he has, uh, gone on to the other side, so uh, just, uh, just throwing that out there. He, he will be missed. Um, that looks like all I've got, so.
Congratulations cyclones. Boo!
I don't know where that came from, but anyways.
I am a cyclone.
Can I get a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second, Kathleen? There's two people here that would like to vote on that.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good night.